Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome, we will call this meeting to order. And if you would all please stand, we'll start with the invocation.
Gracious Father in heaven, we come to you humbly. We come to you with really this opportunity to pause, to fully know that you are God that we are not. We pray, Father, that you will bless us in this meeting today, give us not only knowledge, but wisdom, discernment over this agenda, Father, to make decisions that will not only honor and glorify you, but do what's best for the students of St. Petersburg College. Thank you for the administration, the staff, the faculty, but most importantly, thank you for the students, the students that are the heartbeat of this college, Father. We just pray that we will rise to the occasion to meet all of their needs and challenges so that they can go into a productive workforce, Father. We just thank you for everyone here today. Guide us, protect us, be with our families, be with the men and women of the armed forces, and just put your armor of protection around them, Father. Forgive us when we fail you. We pray these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. I believe, is Mr. Gibbons on the phone yet? Do we have him?
Yes.
All right. We have Devaron joining us on the phone today, and Ms. Bella will be here shortly. We're going to start with some recognitions this morning and presentation of retirement resolutions, so if Rick Gibson would please come up first. Morning.
Whereas Rick Gibson has began, he began St. Petersburg College career on Clearwater Campus as a mechanical trades worker in 2000. And whereas Mr. Gibson proved to be a dependable and proficient employee and was promoted to mechanical crew leader at the Caruth Health Education Center in 2001. And whereas Mr. Gibson's responsibilities included maintaining mechanical equipment and building controls, over the years, he worked on several additional campuses, including the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus and the Downtown Center. At the time of his retirement, he served as facility specialist at the Downtown Center. And whereas Mr. Gibson was a valued member of numerous college committees, including the Career Service Employee Council where he served as chair in 2015-16, he was charged with ensuring the ADA facilities compliance at the Downtown Center and was instrumental in developing and presenting the college's top-gun customer service training program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Rick Gibson and extend to him our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College this 17th day of April 18th. Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Dr. Williams and the board for this honor. I've known Dr. Williams for a few short years. I won't mention how many, but she was associate provost at health then. And she was very fair but firm with the students back then, and I knew then that she would do well. At this point, I'd like to also mention an untung hero of the college, that being Gene McCaslin. He's a mechanical trades worker at Gibbs, and without his creativity and MacGyverisms, we would have been up many, many, many troublesome creeks. And I would also like to mention and thank Diana, who through her creative works at the end unfortunately of every budget year, has somehow managed to pull through and get us the things that we need. One instance in particular, and I know I've got to cut this short, but it sticks out in my mind, that fan went out on the cooling tower, which means nothing to probably the majority of you, but it would have been very expensive to get fixed. So she pulled together a crew of us AC guys, bought the fan motor, rented a crane for four hours, brought the crane out, us guys went in there, took it loose, set it down on the ground, replaced the motor, set it back up in there, attached the motor. She bought us pizza. It took a total of four hours, a total of six hours. The crane, four hours, probably cost a third of what it would have cost to have a company come in and do it. I don't know if she was recognized for her creativity and positive management, she should have been, but I want to recognize that.
Good job.
But anyway, thank you all for being here today. Thank the board especially for recognizing me, and Tanja, thank you for being my friend all these years, and I hope you continue to be my friend.
I will.
And board, if there's ever anything at all, anything, that I can do for you folks, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you all.
And next, we'd like to invite up Concepcion Whitstone.
Ms. Whitstone here? Good. Good to see you. Whereas Concepcion Whitstone began her career with facilities planning and institutional services as a custodian on the St. Petersburg Gibbs Campus in 1996. And whereas Ms. Whitstone has been a dedicated custodian, always going above and beyond her work responsibilities, volunteering for campus projects and helping others in their time of need. And whereas Ms. Whitstone has always been an advocate for higher education, encouraging students and prospective students to enroll at St. Petersburg College and then finish what they start. And whereas Ms. Whitstone will leave behind colleagues and friends who will miss her companionship but will cherish the memories they have created together over the years. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Concepcion Whitstone and extend to her best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College this 17th day of April 2018. Congratulations.
Yes.
Would you like to say a few words?
I made it, thank you.
That's it? All right.
I miss all SBC here, all the people here, everything, everybody's our active works, good for us. Thank you, SBC. I miss this SBC very loving each other.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work, Ms. Whitstone. And finally today, we'd like to call up and recognize Ms. Deborah Boyle.
I got you. This is from me. I just think we all should stand. Deborah told me not to cry, so I'm going to really try to get through this if.
No tears.
All right. Whereas Deborah Boyle has been an effectual and compelling advocate for St. Petersburg College since first reporting for part-time duty in the Budget Department in 2014, 2004. Later that year, she began full-time employment in the dual enrolled as, and a dual role as an administrative specialist on SACS reaccreditation and professional development. And whereas Ms. Boyle quickly rose through the ranks, proving to be a talented and dedicated worker with a contagious smile and a willingness to assist all who sought her help and guidance. And whereas Ms. Boyle, a proud St. Petersburg College graduate, continued to pursue her own educational goals, acquiring a bachelor's degree from the University of South Florida in 2003 and a master's degree from the University of Phoenix in 2006. And whereas Ms. Boyle, following service as coordinator of professional development for the Human Resources Department, accepted a position as chief of staff in the college president's office in 2009 and continues to serve admirably in that position today. And whereas Ms. Boyle has served creatively and completely three college presidents, organizing and planning meetings and conferences, playing an integral role in the two presidential searches, serving as a liaison between the college and elected officials, mentoring students, counseling staff, and representing the college on charitable boards, and whereas Ms. Boyle has made student success a part of her job, responsibility, advising and counseling numerous young men and women who have sought her guidance through the years. And whereas Ms. Boyle has served our college with loyalty and distinction, we wish her happiness in her retirement as she cares for her family and spends quality time with her friends. She will be missed. Now therefore, be it resolved that the St. Petersburg College Board of Trustees and the total college community hereby recognize and appreciate the outstanding contributions to the college by Deborah Boyle and extend to her our best wishes for enjoyment throughout the years ahead. Said resolution being adopted and approved by the Board of Trustees, St. Petersburg College this 17th day of April 2018. I know I read this resolution, and every word that's in it is real. But I do want to say a special thank you to you for your work, for your love of this institution, for your help with so many people over the years in all your roles, not just this role. From the time you hit the ground running, you started working on improving the lives of others. And your footprint will forever be felt here at St. Pete College. You have a family here, and we love you. Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much for coming. I see so many lovely faces, people that have meant so much to me over the years, and I appreciate you coming. It's a bittersweet celebration. It has been the role of a lifetime. I've just had the most marvelous time, and I've made a lot of friends. One of my students is here with me today, Ms. Alexis DeVoe, and she cut class to be here with me today. But don't tell anyone. I just want to say that I really appreciate everything that you've done. I will miss all of you very much, and I will also miss my husband humming Hail to the Chief every night when I come home. Thank you.
I almost feel like we should have a moment of silence for Deborah.
Can you guys kind of bunch up so we can?
Yeah.
Let's get the board up there, too.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I know she stepped out for a second, but I know all of us sitting up here are well aware of how many times she has kept us on track and gotten us where we need to be at the right time. We thank her for her attention to detail and for her care for this college, and she will be missed. But I know exciting times are ahead for her. We will move on past the recognitions. I do not believe we have any announcements today, and we will go straight to the comments, starting with the board chair. I'll make mine brief. I had the pleasure this month to attend the Foundation Scholarship Luncheon again this year, which is just such a phenomenal place to be every single year. I love it, I look forward to it. I want to thank the Foundation for the hard work that they do for this college and for the students that are helped through those scholarship funds and the monies that are raised. It's inspiring to hear the stories of those that are there in person and to speak with people face-to-face who actually have gotten to attend St. Petersburg College because they got some financial assistance. I am just blown away by their stories, where they've come from, and where they're going in their lives, and it's exciting, and can't wait to go next year. So thank you. In addition, I just want to thank everyone again for their assistance, their help, their support in the investiture process. I know Dr. Williams is probably happy that that is all over.
Yes.
It was a lot of fun, but it was a lot of work and stress, too, I know. And I had a blast, and it was exciting to see everyone both at the reception the night before and then the ceremony at the Palladium. I don't think it could have gone any better. And it was, for me, I think, a great, great time in the history of St. Petersburg College and one that I'll remember for quite a while. And then, you know, just a little personal note, I did attend the Titan Trot 5K on Saturday as I promised I would. I saw many of you there as well. That was a lot of fun. My competitive nature got the best of me. I did almost fall across the finish line from a flat-out sprint, but I did finish, and it was a lot of fun, and I was happy to be there. With that, we'll move on to other board members. Any comments today?
When I left the investiture, I went to something that I've done, this is my second time with the Graduate Leadership Academy, I think is the correct name for it, interviewing, mock interviewing students and them not knowing who they're sitting with until the end, and then they get this big surprise. Of course, mine's not usually a big surprise because my picture's everywhere, but what a rewarding experience that is to help those kids get ready for, or not kids in a lot of cases, for their interviews and to let them learn that no matter where you are, you always have to be your best self because you never know who you're sitting with. So I would encourage anybody to get involved in that that can because it's typically just me and whoever I can get to go with me. And I think there's a lot of room for growth in that program and some pretty amazing things could come out of it. Yeah.
Absolutely. And Mr. Gibbons, I don't want to forget about you. Any comments today?
I'm good. I think you all said just about everything, so I'm good.
Thank you, sir. We will move on to our president's comments.
I too want to thank the college family for your support in the investiture. I thought that it was a special time, one that you only get one opportunity to do that, and I want to thank the committee for raising funds and us not using any college money to do that. And I want to thank the SPC family for being there, whether you were online or you were there personally. It meant a lot to me, more than I thought it would mean, and I just want to thank you for that. I also had the foundation in mind, so you've already thanked them for the work that they have done. I thought that that was really good. What Chair Stonecifer didn't say about his competitive nature in the 5K.
I was leaving certain parts out.
Oh, well, he almost beat a young kid, like they were just one leg apart from winning, and the young man fell out on the ground after, I think he ran out of his shoe trying to beat you.
He did, he was missing a shoe.
His shoe came off. So I do want to thank the faculty for their work on the 5K. They ended up raising $2,000 to give scholarships. There were many people who participated. They wanted me to give a special thanks to Dr. Vidito, Joe Tirana, the Clearwater Security, all of the volunteers, and the sponsors. There was a flyer on Facebook. Shannon did a great job. I'm just very proud of our faculty who came out and raised money on behalf of our students and had fun doing that. So I just want to applaud you and thank you for that and raising money for scholarships. We also had our advisory committee meeting where we had all of our different advisory committees meet this past week. I had a chance to meet some outstanding individuals as well as students who provide us with guidance every year, all year, on how to improve our curriculum and the work that we do. So I want to thank those who put the advisory committee piece together. I thought that was really good. We also had the statewide, we were the hosts for the math pathways through the Florida Student Success Center. I want to thank Dr. Coraggio and all others who helped put that together. The chancellor was here. All of the Grade 28 were represented on how we can do better with math and what can we do to help students through the pipeline. And then finally, on the 12th, is our 136 commencement exercise. We have over 2,000 students graduating, 1,300 signed up to walk across the stage. So I look forward to all of us actively participating to support our students on their memorable day. And then finally, I want to share that we have done a great job with our financial audits. There are four of them that we do. One is the Financial, Operational, Federal Financial Aid and Bright Futures. They're very rigorous, a lot of work. I'm pleased to report that the college had no findings on those, and we had two items that we needed to fix in the operational audit, and we have done that. So I'm very proud that we're not on the hit list and that we're doing a very good job. I want to applaud the business services and financial aid teams for their hard work in our audits. Want to make sure you know that you're valued and appreciated. You're not hardly seen, but we know without you, we could not do the work that we're doing. So thank you for that, and I'm sorry to be long, but we needed to share that, and that will be all for now.
No problem. Thank you. I do not have any public comment cards in front of me unless they have not been delivered yet. Seeing none, we will move on to the review and approval of last month's minutes from the trustees meeting on March 20, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? All those in favor? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? So moved, thank you. We'll now move to monthly reports. I know Mr. Lang could not be with us today. Ms. Gardner, do you have anything for us?
I do, good morning.
Morning.
You have on your desk the, excuse me, 2018 Legislative Session New Law Summary. It is in a draft form because it's pending the finalized version from the AFC and also the Florida lobbyist. The first two pages gives a summary of some of the important bills and legislation, and then it also includes the system-wide budget and including our own appropriations for St. Petersburg College. And then there are summaries of several of the bills that do impact the Florida college system. There weren't as many as many years, but they're there, as well as some of the bills that were key that did not pass this session, and there are summaries of those as well. When you do get the finalized version, which I hope will be available in the next two days, electronically, you'll be able to go right to the links and link from that version to the bill itself and the laws, and also will be published as well. If there's any questions about any particular piece of legislation or law, please just let me know and we'll get you an answer.
Sure.
I had a question about the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas bill and its impact on the collegiate high school and the charter school. Will we have to make any specific changes, or how will that impact the collegiate high school?
That's the school safety bill. It does include all schools, including charter schools, so it will impact the charter school probably, most notably would be the hiring of a resource officer.
And while the legislation obligates the school district to provide, I think, all of the additional SROs and such, I know that there's a lot of discussion going on. Is that something that will end up ultimately coming out of our budget, do you think? Or how?
We're talking about.
Just curious.
Right.
I happen to be listening to this conversation over the state by local.
I believe there's still some guidance coming out on that, on that part. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Okay, I'd like to invite up Dr. Crawford and Mr. Fox with a strategic impact plan presentation.
Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
As I said, I'm Dewan Fox, and with me is Dr. Crawford, and we're going to provide you a brief update on what we're calling a strategic impact plan there, but it's really strategic direction for the college of where we're going in our next steps. It's a lot of work that's been done over the last six months to build to where we are today, and I'm going to share some of the steps of that process that we're going through, and then Sabrina's going to share some next steps for us as well. As you're all familiar with the president's vision of building a community of care and her foresees, in order for us to get there, we knew we had to provide a platform for everyone to be able to provide their input on where we go in the future with building a community of care. So as a group, we formed a committee that's really looking at how can we solicit feedback from all college stakeholders, from faculty, staff, and students, to look at how we're building a community of care moving forward. So some of the avenues that we did, we looked at our three commitments that you approved in January. So some of the work that you're going to listen here today is something that's happened since you approved these three commitments until today. We looked at academic excellence, we wanted to know what the college stands and input on what we need to do to deepen our commitment to academic excellence, how the college really impacts our economic mobility moving forward, and the impact that we need to make on our community engagement. We provided our value as a working team that we put together was to provide a platform for everyone who has a voice to be able to voice their opinion on where we're moving forth in our strategic direction. We created several instruments to help us get there, and I'm going to share a few of those instruments with you today. But before I do that, I want to recognize our working team. This is our initial working team that we put together, who brought together their ideas on how they felt that this process should go. We had faculty, we had faculty involved, we had administrators' involvement, we had career service and student services involvement as well to help us build this plan. I would like to recognize two people who has been, went on and above their work to help us with this process. One is Ashley Karen, who put together all the committee's thoughts and built a survey for us. And the second one is Vicky Westegar, who facilitated over 14 focus groups on all of our different sites. And if you've been involved in a focus group before, you know the facilitator really dictates on how that focus group is going to go, and she did a wonderful job, it's really. And she did a wonderful job of really sitting back and being the ears for the group and really giving everyone an opportunity to voice their opinion. As I mentioned, we created different avenues and instruments to collect college-wide feedback. We had a survey. We did our college-wide focus groups, 14 focus groups. We invited nearly 300 people to participate in our focus groups on different sites. And we invited community members as well. We know they are part of our ecosystem so that we wanted their voices to be heard in this process as well. For our first instrument that we used was a college-wide survey. And this survey was sent out to the entire college and the community, and we got over 1,900 responses to this survey. We had a close to 600 staff administrators reply to this survey. We had about three, close to 300 faculty, which 30% of those faculty were our part-time adjunct faculty members. And we had over 50% of our students weigh in, and we had 76 community members. Some things about this survey, it was an anonymous survey. It included about five to six questions that really focused on our three academic commitments, and it was open-ended questions. So you can imagine, people can put it in there whatever they felt like they necessarily want to say an opportunity for them to share that information. One of the questions we asked was, in one of three words, what comes to mind when you think of SPC? And here's an illustration of a word that we used with those results. We had over 6,200 words that were entered into this portion of our question. And you can see some of those words that jump out that you hear: community, education, excellence, convenient, affordable, and opportunity. These were the most common-used words that when we asked our college stakeholders on what comes to mind when you think of SPC. We also asked of our 13 values, if you don't know, we do have 13 values listed right now as part of our mission statement. Of those 13, rank with as one to three, your top three values of SPC. And jumps out at you right there, student focus. As you know, it's number one value for SPC. As voted on by these stakeholders, academic excellence was number two, and then diversity was number three. So part of this process, what we want to do is really review our mission, vision, and values as well to make sure that everyone can understand the values that we have and be able to say what our three to five or six values are. Right now, we have diversity listed, but if you look at our commitments, you can see we talk a lot about equity. So that may be a discussion that we have as a committee and a team when we're building our strategic plan moving forward as one of those values moving forward. Let me turn it over to Sabrina for a few.
Okay, good morning. Before I continue, I just want to also thank Dewan Fox for the amount of work that he's done on this process. He's kept us in line. He's kept us moving forward, and you can tell the passion that he has just by sharing a little bit with you. So to give you an idea of the different focus groups that we held, we did have four different focus groups with our faculty, our staff members, and our students. And those were held on the Seminole campus, the St. Pete Gibb campus, the Tarpon campus, and then we had one online one. We also reached out to those community members at our Clearwater campus and our Midtown campus. And having sat in only a few, not all 14, they were a wealth of knowledge and some very honest feedback and sharing. And we've been working right now to compile all of that data to be able to share back with you. So when we talk about next steps, as you know, after the start of President Williams beginning, she put together a transition team who's been working, who worked hard to give us a foundation of some ideas that we want to be able to bring forward. We have these strategic planning, the survey, and the focus groups that we've been working on. We have other members of the college who've also been doing things like working on a retention plan. Our deans have been working on their plans. There's many different avenues that we plan on bringing together at these three collaborative labs. So whereas the focus groups gave us a start and an open voice, this is our next opportunity to include more of our college family in this discussion. And we decided we would host three different collaborative labs. The first one, looking as Dewan mentioned, at our mission, our vision, and our 13 values, making sure that those are in line and potentially condensing the 13 values into something that can, people can remember on the streets, what's the values of SPC, these three to six things. The next one, and that's going to be taking place on April 30. Our next one will be working on looking at overall goals and strategies for meeting the three commitments. These will come, this will come also with benchmarks that we hope to achieve over a five-year period. And the combination of the results that we get from these two collaborative labs, we are hoping to bring back to you at your next board meeting. And then finally, on May 17, we're going to hold one last collaborative lab. And this will be looking at those day-to-day for the first year. What are those, those things that we want to do to try to move forward, whatever those, however, to meet those goals that we've identified in the first year? So we're going to do those one-year tactical plans. And you can notice that in each one of these collaborative labs, we have 100 people coming. So there's openings for 100 people at each one, so an additional 300 voices should be heard. And to get a sense of who will be invited to these and who we are actually asking to select the members, you can see that we're looking to have at least 25 faculty at each one of these, a good representation between our A and P and our career staff, a representation from our administration, our college organizations, our students, of course. And we continue to reach out to our community members to be involved in this process. And that's what we have. Are there any questions we can answer for you?
I have one. Do you want us at any of those?
You are welcome to be at any of those, absolutely. We weren't sure the difference between either having you in them or us bringing them to you to review, but we're open to either, and you can discuss that and let us know.
Any other questions?
How did you reach out to the community members who are participating? And have you gotten a sufficient response to meet the goal of?
We have. We went through our academic deans and our provosts, who already have built relationships with many organizations from an advisory committee or different partnerships they have on campuses. And we had worked with those to identify our partners.
Of course, if you have suggestions, we're open to hearing more.
Thank you both. This is a great update on this process. As we talk about these things, you know, in the board meetings and come up with the three commitments we want to focus on over the next couple of years, it's nice to now see this getting merged in with some of the other things we're working on on a higher level for the college and to see what the next steps are and where it goes from here, especially getting these progress updates as well. Very helpful and glad it's being done. So thank you very much. Appreciate it. And we will try to be at some of those meetings. We'll figure that out on our end.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to invite up the Model UN and Dr. Rivero and Mr. Slater.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning.
Dr. Williams. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you to speak on the SPC Model United Nations program. I'm Roy Slater, faculty member in the Social Science Department at Clearwater Campus. I'm joined by my colleague, Dr. Rivero, academic chair, social scientist at Seminole Campus, and Model United Nations students, Frida Torre Castro, Michael Spark, Chris Kiyasich, Tina Bott, who is one of our early college students, who was on the Washington and New York team, and Jacqueline Hendricks.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. The Model UN program at SPC was established about eight years ago to provide opportunity for SPC students to travel to conferences, to engage with students from around the world, to discuss global issues. The Model United Nations is a simulation of the United Nations. And so what happens is when colleges and universities sign up to participate, National Model United Nations, the organization, assigns the college, the university, a country. And students then have to prepare as if they are diplomats, ambassadors from said country. Okay? At the United Nations conferences, there are students from around the world. The New York conference is the largest conference that we participate in. And that's in March of each year, and about 5,000 students from around the world attend that conference. It's so large, they've had to divide it into two weeks. And so we participated in Week B, which are roughly about 2,500 students in attendance. This is an academic team, an academic program, so we have an application that students submit to apply for the team. And then after the MUN faculty, we get together and we select the students that would be on the teams to travel to the conferences. After students are selected, they have to get to work. They have mandatory meetings that they have to attend, and those are usually on Fridays, two-hour meetings. They have to write position papers. Those position papers get them prepared for the debates and the discussions that they will have in committee. The position papers address the topics before the committees that they have been assigned, and they are addressing those topics from the perspective of the country that we've been assigned. At the conferences, they discuss issues, topics before their committee with the other students, and they write working papers that they hope will become draft resolutions, and if approved by the committee, thus resolutions. The MUN program is open to all students at the college, from early college through baccalaureate level. We're so pleased and proud over the years that we've had diversity of students to be represented on the teams from early college to the baccalaureate program and on each of our campus campuses. Team preparation is quite extensively. These young people put a lot of time in and work, and that is recognized, of course, in the awards that they have received at these conferences. They are participating at these conferences and competing against students from large research institutions. In New York, Syracuse University was there, University of California, Texas Christian University, West Virginian University, and many others, and you'll see in the program book that we will present to the board shortly. So thank you for this opportunity to present before the body. The team has done extremely well over the years, and we're so proud of the students who've come through our program. Many of them have gone on to USF and University of Florida and continued their involvement in Model United Nations. In 2016 in Washington, that team received the Outstanding Delegation Award. Spring 2016 in New York, Outstanding Delegation Award. Fall 2017, Washington, Outstanding Delegation Award. Spring 2018, Ecuador Galapagos, which is our international conference. Every other year, we do an international conference. That team received Outstanding Delegation Award. And this past March in New York, that team received the Outstanding Delegation Award. Outstanding delegation is the highest award presented by National Model United Nations. And these young people, again, are competing with students from big research universities, and they are really representing this institution. So we're so proud of our students. And they, and they do more. So my colleague, Dr. Rivero, will present.
Thank you. Thank you, Professor Slater. Thank you, Board. My name is Dr. Douglas Ferro. I'm the Chair of Social Behavioral Sciences at the Seminole Campus. I would like to, you know, say congratulations to the students and to Professor Slater. Doing marvelous job. He's done a marvelous job as a lead faculty advisor for Model United Nations. The Outstanding Delegation Award is only received by about 8% of the schools participating, and that's basically the gold medal. So that's just outstanding, what our students have been doing, what Professor Slater has been doing with our students. And as you can see from this slide here, Model United Nations is also intricately connected to our community of care, component of St. Petersburg College. Our Model United Nations students also engage with the community with a variety of activities. For example, this includes global classrooms with Penada County Schools. At the Clearwater Campus, every year, we have middle school students, high school students come by, and our students volunteer themselves to be directors, rapporteurs, chairs, and to really engage and mentor our students. It's a very successful conference that happens every year, so much so that I've heard that we may even expand it to two campuses. I think I've heard that that may happen. So it's just outstanding community engagement. Also, some of our students have participated in volunteer, volunteer experiences with young kids at churches. On Saturday mornings, they've gone out with Professor Randy Lightfoot and with Dean Smiley to churches to mentor and do mock sessions with students, sort of help them become engaged with Model UN. So perhaps in the future, they'll come to St. Petersburg College. So this shows a variety of community engagement activities. Some of us also were a part of that. We got down and dirty in the Galapagos Islands doing volunteer work for a day when we went to Ecuador. So that was an awesome experience. So we got to do some community engagement, actually at a conference. But this is so much a wonderful community engagement activity that our students do also as part of Model UN, connecting academic excellence with community engagement, you know, the hallmarks of SPC. And with that, I would like to introduce a couple of students who are going to talk to you and say thank you. First student is Michael Spork.
Thank you so much, Board. I just want to thank you on behalf of all the students in the Model UN program. Thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to go to all these different conferences on the national and on the international level to compete. As you heard Professor Slater say, we do meet regularly, and we do team up so that we can represent the college well. And us as a team do meet often away from those hours, talking and texting and calling and emailing to make sure that we can do the college proud. And most importantly, I think, is that our goal as students is, no matter what college student or professor that we come in contact with here in the States or even out of the country, we make sure that we're representing SPC well and make sure that we are representing ourselves as a strong academic college that has a lot of opportunity and hope for its students. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for the opportunity to participate in the Model UN program. Personally, I've seen so much growth within our team itself, starting from our very first meetings to some of our very last meetings, where, you know, we had some students who were very shy and quiet versus our last meetings, students who were able to get up there and come up with a speech on the limb about their country and about their topic because they were so passionate about the issues. And that's all possible because of the Board of Trustees and Professor Rivero and Professor Slater and their help and dedication for this program. So thank you.
Okay, questions?
Do the students receive academic credit for their participation since it's an academic program?
We do have a Model United Nations course, and students who are in the course do receive academic credit, yes. But for those who are not, they gain a lot out of the experience.
Sure.
And I know they will carry that with them wherever they go after their studies here at SPC.
Sure. Thank you.
And we would like, I would like for the members to, the team, to present to Dr. Williams and the Board the Outstanding Delegation Award that they received in New York, in Washington, and in Ecuador.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all again very much. When we have more time, I would love to hear what the pressing issues of the day were. And Malawi, was that the country that was represented? Yeah. We'll get there. We'll have that conversation. Thank you all. Now, I'd like to invite up Ms. Jeanette Hunt with our monthly budget report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Board Trustees, Dr. Williams. This morning's report is our, as of March 31, 2018. And we'll first take a look at our revenue. The first line item, our student tuition and fees, came in at about 57.1 million. Included in this is about 55% of our summer registration, which began in March. So we'll receive about another 45% in the next couple of months. Next, our state funding at 48.5 million. As I mentioned last month, we received our first lottery appropriation. As I mentioned last month, we received our first lottery appropriation in February. So, included in this amount is our lottery total of about $5.6 million. The next few line items are other revenues and our fund transfers in. You see $2.5 million has been transferred in so far. We will transfer the remaining in for a total of $3.7 million by the end of the fiscal year. And our reserves also is appropriated at the end of the fiscal year as well. Just as a reminder, we projected a couple of months ago that we would spend a little over a half a million dollars of our reserve this year. Here are tuition projections. We have been looking at this on a monthly basis, based on where our enrollment has been. As I mentioned, our summer enrollment began in March, and we will continue through the first month of classes, the first day of classes, in order to monitor where we are in the summer. Just as a reminder, for fall, we were up 0.4%. In the spring, we were up 0.9%. Right now, we're projecting $248,000 above the budgeted amount. Next, looking at our expenses, our personnel and benefits at $84.8 million, at about 75% of our expended budget. And our current expense in capital, we have spent so far in this period compared to last fiscal year, about a million and a half less than we did this fiscal year. Our revenue over expenses, 7.8 million. As I mentioned last month, we will continue to see this variance narrow as we approach the end of the fiscal year. Are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Brian Miles with our fiscal year 1819 budget development update.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Madam President, members of the Board. My name is Brian Miles, and this morning, I will be giving you a very high-level overview of our budget development update process. As you know, every spring, we go through our budget development process, and this spring is no different. We are crafting our budget for fiscal year 1819 right now, and we are tying our budget to not only the strategic priorities we've set for the future, but more importantly, to our three pillars. And we will eventually tie our spending to the Strategic Impact Plan that is forthcoming in the months to follow. Today, I just want to highlight a few things that go into this development, and then I'll be back in front of you in May with a proposed fiscal year 1819 budget. And then, we'll be back in June. If the budget is simply considered in May and not approved, we'll be back in June for your approval of the budget. I just want to discuss two portions of our budget, the revenue side and the expense side, and I'm only going to highlight a couple of items that go into each side. As you know, our budget is largely based on our enrollment. Our tuition dollars come from our enrollment, and last year, you'll recall, we budgeted down about 3.5%. And Jeanette just briefed that our current projections for year-end are such that we would finish above that 3.5%. We've seen a small uptick in enrollment throughout the year, and that's favorable. So, we're expecting to come to you in May with better forecast projections for next year's enrollment. Our projections are based on a linear regression model and use of historical data. So, that's where that comes from. Another part of our budget is student fees, and as goes enrollment, so goes student fees. They are tied specifically to enrollment, and when enrollment goes down, these go down. When enrollment goes up, these tend to go up. We take in about 10 and a half million in student fees each year, and we're expecting to take in about the same amount in fiscal year 1819. Another large portion of our budget, which represents about 50% of our budget, is the funding we receive from the state of Florida. And this comes in three forms. It comes in the form of dollars from the Florida College System Program Fund, lottery funding, and also performance funding dollars. I'm happy to say that this year, we will be receiving about 760,000 more from the state for a total of 68 million. 51 million of that will come from the program fund that I just mentioned, and that's down from 53 million from last year, so $2 million difference there. That $2 million difference will be made up through our lottery funding. We'll be receiving 16 million instead of 14 million from lottery. And of course, as Jeanette mentioned, we don't begin receiving lottery funds until February, so during the fall, we'll have to monitor our cash flow to make sure we're spending wisely. We still don't have information about our performance funding dollars. Last year, we received 3.6 million, and that was based on a $1.8 million institutional investment on our end, and then new dollars of 1.8 million, excuse me, from the state for a total of 3.6. We're expecting about the same amount this year. Another significant portion of our budget is our reserve, our fund balance. And I've told you in the past that we're trying to reduce our reliance on fund balance. Fiscal year 1617, we budgeted about 4.5 million in our budget from fund balance. We've decreased that in this fiscal year to 1.8 million, and we hope to reduce it further next year. Our goal is that over three years, we will reduce our reliance to zero on the fund balance. So, that's good news. We're on track. The expense side of the budget, I just want to highlight a couple of things. This is obviously not all-encompassing, but the college is undergoing a significant effort to reallocate resources. We're looking at our organizational structure college-wide and, you know, focusing in on where we can achieve efficiencies in personnel and also business processes. As you know, we're also looking at our real estate footprint and how we use our buildings and space college-wide to improve our space utilization in the program fund. Another big expense that we have that has been on the rise over the last few years is health insurance. And we had budgeted about 15 million in this past year's budget. We're expecting to budget more in next year's budget. We have a current request for proposal out to the various health insurance carriers to provide us with a comprehensive package that would benefit our employees. We're trying to obtain the most competitive package on behalf of our employees, and we'll be bringing back to you a proposal for new health insurance coverage in the next couple of months. And then, third and finally, while professional development does not represent a huge part of our overall $143 million budget, it represents about $500,000. And as you know, in lean times, this is one area that organizations tend to reduce or cut entirely. SPC is committed to the development of its employees, and we're going to try our very best to make sure that this stays at the current level of funding at $500,000 for the next fiscal year, and we just wanted to let you know that we maintain that commitment the best we can. That's all I have. As I said, I'll be back in front of you in May and June with our proposed budget, in the hopes that you will consider what we bring in May and, at the very latest, approve what we bring to you in June. If you'd like to discuss in between with me on an individual basis or Dr. Williams, I'd be happy to meet with you. Our requirement with the state is that we submit a balanced budget, and that is due to the state at the end of June or early July. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Brian. I think we're moving in the right direction as we have been for the last year or two now. I know it's been hard work for everyone. I have just one or two questions. Do we have any idea yet what our projections for enrollment will be in the next fiscal year, or will we have details of that in the May meeting?
We'll bring back details. We, as you recall, we budgeted 3.5% down last year.
Right.
Depending on what happens with summer, we expect to finish right around 2.9% or 3%. And so, I think our projections, when we come back to you in May, assuming summer breaks even, will be a little bit better than what we forecasted last year.
And then, two, with analyzing health insurance options that are out there, is that something that we'll have more details on in May as well, or do you think that'll be later in the year?
I'm hoping to bring that back in May to give you a good look at what we have. As I said, the RFP is out there now, and the vendors are putting their packages together to provide a response.
Great. Any other questions?
Not a question, but a comment. And I know we've done it in the past. I did it with the City of St. Pete. Minimal use of reserves, I mean, that's, and I know we're nipping that down, but using reserves for recurring expenditures only doubles the gap to next year, and you never catch up. So, just, when I get the budget, I'm going to pay close attention to that. I know that we've done it in the past. I know why we've done it. But if there's, if there's ways that we can mitigate that, we'll look for that.
Absolutely. And let me just say that while we budgeted 1.825 million this year, which is down from 4.5 from last year, we're expecting to finish the year only using about 750,000 of that. So, next year, we'll budget hopefully below 1.8 million, and we expect to use even less. Going into year four, we expect to have zero reliance on fund balance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have two action items next. We will take them both separately. The first is our personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report as you have received it?
So moved. Second.
Do you have a question?
Sure.
The trip to Australia, is it 20 students or 10 students? Because we have both figures. And when you're spending $4,200, I'd like it to be the larger, but... Anyone? Got all day?
10.
It's 10. Okay.
Any other questions, comments, before we vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. And we also have an action item for our executive and administrative managerial and professional contract recommendations. You have received a report for that as well. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. One second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That brings us to our consent agenda today. We have no old business within it. There are a few new business items. I would like to take these all together, but I'd first like to open it up to any questions or comments if you've read through, as you've read through some of the reports before we got here today. Do we have any questions or comments from the consent agenda?
We have approval of the consent agenda.
I have a motion for approval.
Second.
And I have a second. I just want to say very briefly, thank you for all those who've helped put the equity report together, as is required by the state. I remember reading through that last year or the year before. I can't remember which it was. That is a lot of information compiled in a pretty easy-to-understand way, but there's a lot there, and there's a lot to dig through. And I thank those who helped to put that together, and in many ways, it looks like we're moving in the right direction there as well. So, thank you all for that.
I do have a question about the equity report. Just the enrollment goals, how they're set. Do we set those based on our existing enrollment, or those are set by the state across the board as to what the expectation is?
For the equity report, I believe the state sets those goals. We set those goals.
And then, my follow-up was, are they adjusted annually? Because at a point, you can't always increase exponentially every year.
Good questions. So, they are set by the college, and we look at the trend data to try to get a sense of where we want to go with it, along with what we've been talking about as a community. So, during the first seven years that we were doing this equity report, or I guess probably the previous seven years, we're just becoming and achieving the dreams college. We really focused our goals on populations that went along with our Achieving the Dream work. Now that our populations have shifted and we have a higher level of Hispanics trending towards the northern counties, we decided last year to spend some time focusing on that, as well as our overall minority population, to see where we can get some changes. And the committee just really looks at those changes, those expectations of where we're headed, knowing where we're going right now, and tries to make something that's a reasonable goal that we can meet, as well as a bit of a challenge, so.
I think at the end of the day, it's going to be important that as we set these goals, we don't have a lot of different goals from different areas and different groups, that we come up with one main plan, and that's what the direction that we're trying to go in, and we will embed some of these in here. I want to applaud the group on the memo itself and summarizing this much better and clearer for us to really understand where we are. And my hope is that we do not end up having several small goals in different areas, that we have one area, this just folds right into that. And so, this has been very helpful to me as well, to get a clearer picture of where we are.
And along those lines, one of my, when I read this, I was wondering, while the goal is measurable, we can clearly see the number. I was curious if we can attribute the success to any particular program or, and I know that's a terrible question to ask, but, you know, so I saw that you have presumed some goes through guided pathways and other things, but I was curious if, to your point, Dr. Williams, if when we look at our overall plan, if we can say, you know, we are meeting these goals because we're doing A, B, and C, and...
And I think that when we added in the emphasis on our disability students, that was a recognition of the fact that we're getting ready to be able to do just that. So, I think that with Dr. Williams' guidance, that's kind of the hope that this will fold into other things.
Thank you. Good comment. It's good.
Thank you. I have a motion. I have a second. All those in favor of the consent agenda approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
That will move us to our president's report.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who helped us during the legislative session. SPC really ended up in a good, in a good place. But I also want to pay special recognition to Dr. Tara Newsom, who has helped us with the Constitution piece. We found out yesterday that the Florida College System was indeed included in this year's Constitution and will be on the ballot for voting in November. Dr. Newsom took, I think, like 20 students with me to stand before the commission to fight for this opportunity. Now, as a college, we need to make sure that we help get our voters to go out and vote for us so that the Florida College System will have a standard governance process in the Constitution. I think that that is going to be very important for us going forward, so I want to thank her for that. And then, as we move forward, we're looking at a monthly plan to engage our legislators to make sure that St. Pete College stays in the forefront on their list, to make sure they understand what our needs and issues are. As the college put plans together, let's make sure we invite our legislative delegates to speak, to visit, to talk, to be a part of, so that we can include them going forward. So, we are moving forward in that stance. And Suzanne, thank you for giving us the overview. We know that it is a draft form. We're waiting on our lobbyists and others to finish, but it is a very good view. I reviewed it, and it's very helpful to give the college's overall view. Will that be available to the college family where they can find it online once it is completed?
Yes. Normally, we post it at the Board's website, so it'll be available electronically, and then we'll have some copies printed and disseminated.
Okay. And then, the final thing I wanted to share, there have been some concerns about safety and emergency preparedness. And the team put together a update for me to share that we are on point with safety and emergency, that we have had trainings. I participated in several folks with St. Pete PD. They came on campus to give us a lot of trainings. Tarpon Springs, the Sheriff's Office, and others have provided such training to the campuses over the past, but we have had 500 people trained since October on emergency management and college-wide security to make sure that we know what to do, how to do, and when to do it. The communication plan is multi-layered. We have audio desktop alerts...
Sorry, I should have asked this earlier, but with respect to the constitutional amendment, on my way in, actually, there was an interview on NPR with respect to the State College question. Could we either include it and/or have a separate summary of that question?
Sure.
And why we support it as either part of our legislative session recap or in addition to distribute it? I think that would be helpful if we want to be out there advocating. I'd like to have a bullet points list of why it's important to us.
Sure.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming today. Our next meeting is right here at the EpiCenter on May 15 of 2018. We look forward on Saturday to hopefully seeing some of you at our official ribbon-cutting and grand opening of the Clearwater Campus Library. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you all very much.[1731.13][1731.13][applause]